Good morning, everybody. It is September 29, 2020. It is 10:00 a.m. And this is the meeting of Story County Board of Supervisors originating from the Administration Building with public access provided via Zoom. Everybody called the meeting to order and asked anybody who wants to to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. And as you all know, the reason that we're providing public access via Zoom is because of COVID-19 and pursuant to Section 21.8.1, we can do so. I will entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
Salute.
Second.
Olson?
Aye.
Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda approved. Next, we have updates on COVID-19. Do staff have any updates? Seeing and hearing none. Are there any hands raised you can see? Seeing and hearing none, I'll go on to the supervisors. Do you have any updates?
I don't. I don't have any state data yet. I just.
Okay.
I would like to let you know that at last Friday's Ames Economic Development Mission meeting, there's always a period where the various board members can provide something of information to the other board members. And Andrew Perry, who is, I believe, its Chief Executive Officer of McFarland Clinic, did inform us that at the respiratory clinics here in the Ames-McFarland clinic, people who were being tested for COVID, there was a 15% to 20% positivity rate. That's obviously their turn into the statistics, but I just found, he found that notable and wanted to remind everybody who was at that meeting that how important it was to wear masks.
I had not heard that. That is a very amazing statistic, given that we supposedly are seeing a trend to go down. We need to be watching.
Well, and these are respiratory, people who are actually going to the respiratory clinics, so they've got a respiratory issue, you know, already. So what they're testing was 15% to 20%. Mr. Colhane was on that call. He could verify that.
Okay. Next, we'll go to public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who would like to make a comment about anything on today's agenda? Seeing nobody, I will close public comment session. And we'll go to discussion and consideration of items brought before the board with a question for immediate action. I have heard of none. Are there any? Okay. Hearing none, I'll go on. We have a proclamation identifying October 2, 2020, as Manufacturing Day. And I would ask the supervisors to join me if each of you would read the two warehouses. And then I'll finish it. Do you have it?
I have it.
Okay. You may. Thank you.
The 2020 Manufacturing Day proclamation, whereas Story County, Iowa recognizes the importance of manufacturing to our local, state, and global economy, and whereas advanced manufacturing is the number-one business sector in Iowa, representing more than 17.4% of Iowa's of the state's GDP, as evidenced by the more than 4,000 manufacturers employing over 222,000 islands, or 14.4% of the state's total workforce, and.
Whereas Story County, Iowa manufacturers pay a significant amount of property tax and user fees, provide outstanding employment opportunities with both high wages and great benefits, and generate exceptional annual earnings, allowing them to be an economic development driver in the community, and whereas the manufacturing industry employs 4,909 individuals throughout Story County with average annual earnings of $62,556, thereby positively contributing to the prosperity throughout the community, and.
Whereas Story County, Iowa routinely sees the positive contributions of our local manufacturers and appreciates and thanks them for their continued commitment to the communities and clientele they serve. And now, therefore, be it resolved that Story County, Iowa does hereby proclaim October 2, 2020 as Manufacturing Day, and we urge all residents to join us in recognizing the critical role manufacturing plays in the local, state, and economic and global economy. I would entertain a motion for adoption of the 2020 Manufacturing Day proclamation.
Salute.
Second.
Headens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. Thank you very much. Did you both sign?
In past years, we'd give like the.
Oh, certainly. See, Dan Colhane has zoomed in on the call. Do you have anything that you would like to say?
Good morning, Supervisor Merkin and Olson and Headens. Thank you for the proclamation. We've done a celebration of Manufacturing Day for the last several years based upon many of the things you just stated. The impact of the manufacturing community here in Story County is significant, and it's always nice to acknowledge the contributions they're making to our local economy. And so we do appreciate your proclamation this morning. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for getting the proclamation to us and notifying us of this. Thank you for your words and all that you're doing. So then, we will move on. There's some, there's some back to some. And Agency Reports, Boost Together for Children report, Nikki Fisher. Nikki, are you on the phone or on the call?
She's on there. She's on.
Okay.
I'm on.
So this is your first report to us. Would you like to summarize anything that's in the written report or add anything?
Um, yeah. First, I just wanted to say hi. I haven't actually got the chance to meet everybody. So I am Nikki Fisher. I'm the new area director for Boost Together for Children. I started in June, and then Marian actually retired at the end of June. So I started all by myself as of July 1st. And so this is the FY '20 year-end report. And I had sent that over. I just kind of wanted to highlight a few things in light of COVID. You know, Boost was still able to, with a few of their programs, you know, a lot of the programs, we do actually go into the home, those had to end up going virtual. But we were still able to serve 108 families, 101 children during that fourth quarter, and 71 were virtual visits. And those ones were recorded, I should say. And, you know, I mean, Boost was still able to provide all of their board meetings. We did everything through Zoom. And so everything still was able to be provided to the community at the best capacity that they could. But in the report, you can see all of the numbers. I kind of give a high-level overview of who Boost is, how we came together to bring Boone County and Story County together. A lot of people do know that. But I also not only wanted to bring the FY '20 information, but just kind of wanted to show you or tell you what is, what Boost is looking forward to in FY '21. We've already started our mini-gra process that we decided to go into a fall and a spring. So we kind of split it up into two different processes. The fall process has already started. The applications were due September 18th, and so the committee has already started meeting on that. And I will have letters out to those that applied by October 19th. We also have all of our contracts, so all of our service providers and all of our preschools. We do have all of our contracts signed and saved by everybody for audit purposes and for our own purposes, but we do have all of our information for the next year, ready to go and are excited to move forward. Boost also had some carryover, as you can see in FY '20. And so with Duroch coming through, it impacted a lot of our communities. We teamed together with CCRNR, the Child Care Resource and Referral, and they applied, and we granted them a Duroch Response Emergency Relief Grant for $13,125. We made that agreement good between Boost and CCRNR good until October 15th. And so they have already started reaching out to impacted community members, centers, and in-home daycares. And so that is actually going well. And I'll have reports and everything on that at, you know, next year's year-end. But just an FYI, we did see the impact of that in our communities. And so we did, we were able to reach out with some of our carryforward funds. And then lastly, I just kind of wanted to, you know, my board is a big part of what I do. I'm a one-person office, but I do have board members that help me through everything and help with all of my decisions. My chair is Celeste Morvet, and my vice chair is Ed Galot, and my secretary is Kelly Polich. But I do have eight board members total. But we are always looking for more, as we can have up to 17. So we always look for, you know, those board members that are definitely passionate about children's well-being in Boone and Story County. So they are a lot of what helped actually move Boost forward. So that's kind of what I wanted to share with you guys today, and then see if you had any questions for me.
Supervisors, do you have any questions for me?
I don't. I think you did a, provided a well-prepared report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any, and I wish you continued success in your new, in this new endeavor. Okay?
Thank you.
Excellent report. Thank you. Good to see you here, and let us know how we can help.
Definitely. Thank you so much.
We will head on then to consideration of minutes, and I don't think we have any minutes today.
No.
Okay. And the consideration of personnel actions, I would entertain a motion to approve personnel actions as listed.
Salute.
Second.
Olson?
Okay. Yes, aye.
Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions are approved. Next, we'll go to claims, and I would entertain a motion for claims, to approve claims, as submitted.
Salute.
Second.
Headens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Claims are approved. Next, we'll go to consent agenda, and there are going to be a couple of requests to pull items, I understand?
Correct.
Okay. Would you make your request, please?
Yes. I would like to pull items six, or sorry, five and six. Five is the contract amendment with raising readers, and six is request for authorization to fill the planning and development director vacancy within.
Are there any other requests?
No.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda except for items five and six, which will be considered separately.
I would salute.
Second.
Olson?
Aye.
Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent is approved, the exception of five and six. And now we'll take up number five, which is consideration of contract amendment with raising readers to adjust unit rate. Sandra, can I understand the estimate information to share to kind of clarify that? Good morning, board.
Good morning. Actually, this change in unit rate is more of an effort to be consistent with other funders. We try to keep the unit rates consistent when possible. So the board, Story County allocates for that particular service, I think it's $4,492. So that doesn't change with the change in unit rate. It's only going to end up in a faster drawdown. The change was triggered because United Way, they provide a lot more, I think it's about 31, over $31,000. And when, in the process of doing the contract, they found that the number of staff hours was going to be a number that was going to be impossible to fulfill. So that's why the unit rate was changed on their end. And then Raising Readers contacted me to see if we wanted to be consistent with that. And so that's where the request came in.
So what I spotted here is that on this amendment requested, it shows an hour of staff time for advocacy of social development at $146.55 per hour. In 2020, the rate was $9.55. Sorry, for this fiscal year, this fiscal year, it's $9.55. And then I went back to fiscal year '20 for asset, and the rate was $12.33. So Sandra, I'm not connecting on your explanation here. Where do we pay anybody but a licensed professional like a psychiatrist? About $146 an hour for contact hours? I mean, this is, that's what caught me. So I'm unclear here what is happening, why all of a sudden, especially with, according to the description, I went through the description of what this service does this morning. So it's on page 320. It's the second page of the ABF5, for those of you who are asset people, okay? And it says advocacy for social development, and the program name is advocacy, which is what I'm seeing here. And this is outreach. This is, some of it's not even connecting with members of the public. You read about there's things like to go ahead and fill the little libraries. You read about advocacy through social media, how many hits there has been. And then it goes down, and then it says the grant that funds the data specialist will end in July 2020. And so therefore, they ask for a small increase in budget across all programs. I cannot, I cannot vote at this point to approve $146 an hour as a drawdown for a staff member to provide what is advocacy for having young people read. Okay? So I would like to suggest this, all right? Is that there are times that even on a consent agenda, when a explanatory memo attached to whatever the action item is, can be so helpful to everyone. And remember, this is.
I provided a memo.
Huh?
I provided a memo.
Where?
It should be attached. It had information on raising readers, and it had information on the 2080 agreement.
I'm trying to scroll down here, and I'm not getting it to scroll down. But so maybe it's my computer. Is there? Was it an email as opposed to on the board?
It was, it was attached to the agenda. It should have been attached to the agenda.
Yeah, I only have the, okay. So there, so that, there, that's part of our, no wonder, when you probably got my call, my voice message last night said, hey, I'm going to ask about this. We didn't see it. Okay? Could we bring this back next week with that additional information clearly attached? Because it's important the public understand, and the other asset agencies understand, and the other asset funders understand, how we would be looking at $146 per contact hour for advocacy. So, so that's, that's where I am on this right now. Okay? If I think we need to bring it back next week, you can attach your memo. And then it also, I think in general here, with consistency, all right? When I first looked at this, I wondered if it was a carryover that we missed earlier, and you were trying to shove those hours in. And so, so if it's just that they can't make the hours, but they still want the funding, that's the same thing we ended up with in YSS. Right? That sounds like to me is we're making, all of a sudden, we're telling agencies after the funding process is done, is that, oh, you need more money, but you aren't going to be able to draw it down per how we've set it up. So I guess more explanation on that would be good.
Okay. Supervisor Olson, that, that's not what it is. It's not going to be any more money. And of course, the board has the authority to leave the unit rate the same or increase it to be consistent. It will still be the same amount of money to draw down. So that's certainly the board's.
I understand that, but will we? The same amount of money with less service that was anticipated previously.
Correct.
The unit rate is the only thing that changes for Story County.
Okay.
But it's only like 30.
But if there's a certain amount of money, and that's the unit rate, that buys fewer services.
Yeah. Fewer hours of service. It's only 30.5.
I guess my question is, you said that there was supposed to be an attachment to the.
There wasn't. Yeah, there was an attachment.
Yeah, yeah. For me, I'm only getting, yeah, I understand that the one-page or whatever. I mean, would there be a huge delay, or huge issue if we did delay till next week, just so that we can review? I mean, I'm just wondering, time crunch wise.
I agree. And then let's put it on as a regular agenda item, not a consent agenda, because we know we're going to pull it anyway. I still have questions about the other things. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So then the second item was pulling about the planning, interim director for the planning and development position. And I thought about what Supervisor Merkin said last week about being somewhat uncomfortable, especially when you have small departments. Okay? Basically, we have two people plus a part-time admin assistant, or an admin assistant shared with another department. So I thought a lot about what she said and the possible ramifications, the availability, our need to fill the permanent position right away for P&amp;D, or as much, as close as possible. And where would we even pull from on an interim staff, interim director? And after I thought all about that, I went back to covering the board of supervisors with the supervisors, the department heads reported directly to the supervisors. And if a, in the past, if a department head was, were leading, it was going to be a supervisor who was working with that department staff to help them, not do the technical work, okay? But helping the management, et cetera. The shift then to the internal and external directors' positions was, in part, sold back five years ago, as that's what an external and internal would do, because they had much more ability to once again help lead that, having interacted with the director. So I'm, I'm struggling here. If we're going to try and find a technical person who can fill this for maybe only six weeks, I mean, our labor pool, in my mind, is very narrow. Maybe someone who worked for us before, who's now gotten out of the business, but will be going to come back, who would know how to do some of this technical stuff that really is the assistance for the workload. Or someone who's retired, or a consultant, maybe a civil engineer who works a lot, you know, for going through, have to be a contractor we might not work with. I mean, you know, we work a lot with Fox Engineering, et cetera. But I kept on thinking, who's even going to fill this? And given that we need actually another body down there. So I'm not sure that this is the way I would like to go. I instead would like to look at how maybe the supervisors could help assemble some of your positions right now, some of your duties right now, or maybe Elizabeth could, okay, temporarily, so that you could serve as that leader for the department. That's, those are my thoughts.
Yeah. You know, I understand what you're saying. I also think that it's a pretty technical position in there. I think that Sandra or Elizabeth or whoever have great qualifications, but whether they have the technicals on planning zoning, I mean, things that would come on through that maybe beyond. So I understand the need for an interim. That is not an uncommon practice to put in an interim individual to help through this process. We have no idea how long it's going to take to get a new planning and zoning director. It could be six weeks, it could be six months, for all we know. And we do, I do think you need somebody who has more knowledge base to help facilitate.
Then are you looking at going outside?
It could be. It could be outside, it could be internal, it could be external. I.
Let me ask some questions. Are you, Sandra, are you talking about, let me make sure I understand your cause first.
Okay.
Are you talking, Sandra, about hiring a person on a temporary basis to be the interim director?
No. My initial request was to have one of the internal staff members do it. Both of the planners are interested and certain as an interim director.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that, so we don't have to talk about bringing somebody else in. That's not what we're talking about. And I guess I was confused. So you would be looking at temporarily raising the salary of one of those people, you selecting who would be the interim?
Yes.
And temporarily raising the salaries so they were working.
For the extra, for the extra work that they would do.
For the extra work they would do. And my, my feeling is, quite frankly, somebody's going to be doing that work, and it's whether we can stay in Florida or not.
Exactly.
Let me ask back to this question. I, I remember, to my knowledge, both of the people who are in the department right now do not have five years' experience as working as planners. Am I correct that we, that both of them have less than five years' experience?
I think you're direct on that, but I don't think five years is the requirement.
No. What I'm taking a look at, if the benefit, if somebody's going to all of a sudden be an interim director, okay? Will they bring together, bring in enough of those skills about what Jerry brought to the table, or someone if we hired an outside contractor with more knowledge? That's where I'm headed here. Okay? So you've got two relatively new professionals, both of who I have utmost confidence in, in the performing of their duties right now. Okay? And I see positive things with both of them going forward. I'm concerned if we end up six months, okay, and we're going to have issues that maybe would have, would be spotted by someone like Jerry, who's more, who's much more experienced and has stayed with the profession, stayed on top of the profession, and understands it. That's my concern, my biggest concern. My second concern is, is if we do promote one of them, we still don't alleviate the workload, right? We're a person down in an department that I understand needs a third person. Am I correct in that?
Yes. We're probably going to be that way, even if we did bring somebody in to be that third person, who's still probably a person or two down in the department.
Okay. So that's my other, my other thing there in taking a look there. So then the question becomes, in, maybe if we go with one of the two people who are in the department now, serving as planners, to be the interim, then that person is going to have a little, need a little more time as he or she comes up to speed on figuring out what it was that Jerry just instinctively do, or the thinking process, you know, all of that. Okay? So then we definitely are going to still need somebody in there, at least, I think. Are there employment agencies to which we could hire a planner to help them with their workload?
If we did hire somebody to come in and assist, it would probably be better to hire that person as a planner, because that would be a learning curve for that person, too, to get in and be the director. These two employees have been working very closely with Jerry on these projects, and they would be able to hit the ground running on those. And having an extra person in there to assist the department, I, I think that would certainly be helpful. But I think either one of them would be able to do the job of the interim director temporarily.
I think somebody who's already on staff is probably more likely to be able to pick up and know where what's going on. They're familiar with our specific zoning ordinance, they're familiar with our specific boards and commissions, they're also just familiar with the process that goes on. I wonder if our source of interns at Iowa State couldn't be, couldn't be looked at, see if maybe we could get another intern position? And I know interns have to be, have to be, have to be trained, but that department has such a good, has such a good, such a good track record with interns. I know Amelia started as an intern, I believe, one of our planners started as an intern, and another planner who recently left had been an intern. And I, I know we have a PhD program over there in regional planning. Seems like we could pick up somebody to, as a temporary, to help out with the workload, and that might be a way to go. Sandra, is that something you see maybe could, could work?
I, I think it could help.
If we could figure out, if we had, and we would. If we could figure out, if we had, and we would, and to do it while Jerry's gone, I mean, we have the, we have, I don't know what his vacation payout is, but there's bound to be some money there.
I think it could certainly help.
In the budget.
Supervisor Merkin, there's currently been discussion to try and increase the hours of the current intern. So Jerry is working on that request. So yes, bringing in another intern to help out, that would certainly help. We'd still be left with having somebody at the head, she's ever been these projects through working closely with Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning Commission and so forth.
Okay. I like where we've headed in this discussion. I'm more comfortable with we have interns to help another intern, et cetera. And if that's, if you two feel that, that would be a separate consideration.
Right.
Anyway, but yes.
We'd want you to come back and ask.
Okay.
So it sounds like, to me, it sounds like you two are in favor of appointing one of the two as the interim director.
I lean towards, I do lean towards that. So if you want me to make the motion, I would approve or, of the request for authorization to fill the planning and development director vacancy with an interim director during the vacancy period.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
No.
Not, Headman's?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
And, and, thank you, Board. Thank you, Sandra. And if you want to come back to talk to us again about an intern, if you want to do some more on the budget and discuss it with Lisa Markley.
Okay.
Thank you. I think, I think that if that's something staff can work with, that might be the most important.
Sandra, you're next. You know?
Oh, okay, public hearing item is fifteen, we have no, none. We go additional items. Animal control officer hiring exemption. Sandra.
Okay, Board, this is a request to fill the animal control officer position with an internal staff member. One of the reasons that I made the request to fill it internally rather than externally, it's because as I have been in charge of the animal control department specifically during the time that I've been serving as the director while the position was vacant, I've been working pretty closely with staff and trying to find out some of their concerns and listening to their suggestions. And one of their main concerns is career advancement. And so I thought this was a way that I would be able to address that concern, at least for one of the employees, and also work with the new director to put in place a different structure within the department, maybe look at some career laddering, or some other incentives that could address some of the issues there in the department.
Even before I came on the board, board, I was a very adamant opponent of internal only hires. I ran on it, okay, in part. I think that since the four years, or almost four years I have been on this board, we have posted everything, all right, to the public at the same time. We've shown the taxpayers that we will search for the best candidate. Posting it for all applicants does not prevent us from hiring an internal candidate, but it certainly makes it look fairer, it makes it so that the public knows that we've really searched for the best candidate given within our area in this particular case. And so therefore, I'm going to oppose the request for internal. I support Sandra's goals when it comes to more training for that department. That is something that also started being discussed with the previous animal control officer, or animal control director from the moment I came on. We had multiple, the previous boards, and multiple discussions about that, setting up maybe some more, it's a small department, department, so I don't know how much hierarchy you're going to be able to set up, but I understand about wanting, the employees wanting to feel that they have more involvement in. And when, I think we interviewed the two finalists for this position, that was something that was discussed, I know at least it was discussed in my two interviews. And so I, I think we just need to do what we have done consistently for the last four years, when it's come to any position that's reported to the board of supervisors, or through the board of supervisors, is just post it. I mean, and then they can apply, too, and then it's up to Sandra to make the decision about what's the best fit for the department, not only with skills, but for environment and for culture, et cetera, at this time. But I think posting it just internally sends a bad message, always has, I think always will.
Supervisor Headman, do you have anything to add?
I guess my one question is, the current, the new director, has been the animal control director, is that correct?
She had been the animal control officer.
Right. So we are now without that?
Yes.
So that's just one area that gives me some pause. I agree with the posting, but issues, we don't have someone in that position right now, and, and having to, what is the immediacy to get that position filled, because we do not have someone in there, in or not? That's just something that gives me a little, a little pause.
I would like to add some things here. Yes, I think employees like to see that there are options for advancement, and I don't think animal control is the only place in county government. I fear that if we start posting internally, because employees in one department would like to see opportunities for advancement, we'll be doing it every place. And I also would point out that we had outside recruitment for the director position, and an employee internally was advanced. So I, I'm not in favor of just doing an internal posting. I do know that the new director was the animal control officer, she has the skills. It may be that she may need to keep doing some things in that area until we get a replacement hired, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not for internal postings as a rule, either. I think that we don't necessarily get the best person, and that's nothing against, nothing against our employees, we have good people, as we just saw, we had the director appointed from internal. So I just, I'm not, I'm not wanting to set the precedent, and I think we would be setting it for other areas if we did it. So I think, it sounds like we're all saying it should be posted fully, so I would entertain a motion, and I'll just say what I can do with this format is, I would just cross out an initial, the one, there's only one paragraph that talks about the interim. So we can, we can consider this without the interim.
So I would make that motion that we waive the hiring freeze for the position of the animal control officer, and that it be posted as we post all of them for both, for all candidates. Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Olson?
Aye.
Headman's?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Well, I'd also like to take this opportunity to officially congratulate Anna Anderson, the new animal control director, because I believe, I see that she was on here, is on, there you are, Anna, okay, I see your name on the list. Anyway, congratulations, I'm happy that you decided to apply, and I'm sure that the community will be very happy with you in your service also.
Yes, congratulations, Anna.
Congratulations. Thank you. Everybody, we'll go on to department reports, there are none listed. Other reports is Lisa Markley going to join us for a TIF update.
Does she have a phone?
Lisa?
I'm sorry, I apparently can't unmute my phone, I'm here.
More phone trouble, son. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning. I provided you with a very brief verification, basically, of where we're at and what the estimated TIF remaining balance will be. This is, so what the projected TIF revenue is, is the fifty percent that the board has certified in the, originally. I showed the current bonded debt due and the internal debt to give us an amount that is highlighted there as what my estimated amount of new project debt could be. That would be eighty-four thousand seven hundred. TIF is all estimation, and I don't know how else to present it to you without saying it's all estimation. Until we have an actual amount at year end, when we, when we finally, or when we close our books, we don't know what the BPTC is going to be, we don't know how the levy rates are going to be, are going to affect the amount. What we are assuming for FY twenty-one is nine hundred and two thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and I know we have eight twenty-five, one thirty-six in debt. So that eighty-four seven is what I am saying can be for projects. Clear as mud?
It is. So Lisa, that we don't have to spend that entire eighty-four seven, it's just what's available for projects out of the money that we would be taking from, from the TIF on basically the wind turbines, there's a couple other projects in there, but the wind turbine money. And we don't have to spend a dime of that.
If you don't spend it, if you don't certify for some sort of internal project, internal debt, that goes back to the entities.
Correct. Or we can use that money for our own, by internal project, meaning something that we would identify, as long as we take care of selecting it and certifying by December first. I just want to clarify what the options are on this money. I understand, is it next week, Leanne, that we will have a discussion on the project applications?
Project applications come out of the other part of the money, don't they?
No, this is right here. This is our amount, right here. And one of the things we discussed when we heard the applications, I pointed out at least, about that this money should be for economic development. I mean, you know, and we're actually, we're taking, this is part of the TIF that we take, and so we're taking it away from like the Colonisco School District, and the smaller amounts for school districts, we're taking their money, and we're saying we can take it in an economic, in economic projects that will lead to growth. So we always have that option to say all or none of the projects we've been presented with meet that criteria going forward. I believe we're under the eighty-four seven in what we were presented.
So that's, I asked Assistant Auditor Markley, eighty-four seven is where the projects come from, correct?
Correct.
So Leanne, are you going to be presenting, when are you going to be putting this back on the agenda? Hello, Leanne, are you with us?
Got the plan, unmuted.
Leanne? Well, we assume she'll put it back on the agenda before December first, we need to certify. So what, is there anything else we need to note today?
No. Just what options are with this money. This is the maximum we can do regardless if we keep it for something internally, don't use it at all, use only part of it.
Okay. Lisa Markley, anything else you would like to point out to us?
No, I just wanted to, to give you an amount for your, so when you're considering the projects, you have an idea of what is out there available, estimated. As long as it, as long as it complies with the urban renewal policy that we have in place, yes, you can, you can do, you can do something else with those dollars as opposed to out, dispersing them to those entities.
Did you see Leanne's response in chat?
Could you read it?
The board will start preliminary discussions next week.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Leanne, thanks. Okay, so we'll, we'll take this up next week on our agenda. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa Markley.
You're welcome.
Then we'll go on to, over to nineteen upcoming agenda items. I will put, as we know, we're opening the admin building next Monday morning, it'll open eight to four-thirty, so I will put on Tuesday's agenda, something we haven't gotten to yet, which is discussion and consideration of criteria to consider re-closing county office, county office or offices due to COVID-19. We should have something in our minds about if, you know, what, under what conditions should, would we consider re-closing either an office or offices or an entire building? So I will put that on, I'll make it discussion and consideration, but that doesn't mean we have to vote if we don't come to a conclusion. So that's the one I would have.
I have, yes, I have CICS, discussion and information of three potential counties joining our region, and Russell, with the CEO of our region, will be on the call to kind of present and to answer any questions that we may have at that time. He also said that if you have any specific questions, or he'd have to do some research on it, if you want to email him ahead of time, so that he can present it to, to the board at that particular, particular time.
Since Stowe County's operating now as the fiscal agent, I assume that Lisa Markley's been apprised of this.
I, yes, I've made her apprised of it, and I've also suggested maybe she sit in on that meeting as well, so that she also finds it. Not an upcoming necessarily agenda item, but a question from the region, they were inquiring, and I'm glad you're here, Barb, and maybe it might be Leanne's question, too, about having, re-having their meetings here in our public meeting room, not the entire board, just the admin board, where we could then, you know, have everyone else up here. The reason is that has, they have to sign up all these documents, and they're having a hard time, you know, continuing to do that. So you have probably just the admin team, and maybe the chair and myself in here, and I said, even, I don't even have to be here, I can be in my office if we're getting too many people coming in here. Because I think on the admin team, there is five or six people.
Well, we're opening the office next Monday, and we're posted this room for twenty. So I don't see why, if it's an outside group that meets, that would be within the capacity of the occupancy rating in the room, why we'd have a problem with that.
The one issue would be, is how to run this, and how to utilize the outlets that we have everyone on, and so I don't know.
Also, it'd be a full CICS board meeting with the admin team right here.
Right, is what they're looking at, yes. So it was just something they asked, that is something we could do, they're wondering about it for the October meeting, but they also know that's not time enough, that might have to be pushed to maybe November for consideration. I, you know, I'd have to talk with Barb and have Carla included to figure out what's all involved, and I'm not a detective person, but I could certainly learn it and stuff, to figure, figure something out.
Supervisor Olson?
For me, um, is Treasure Rasmussen still on? Ted, are you still on? Great, yes, uh-huh. Ted, would you be, would you and your staff be able to give us an update by, on October sixth, about how many, how much of the taxes due are still outstanding since the deadline is September thirtieth? Would asking you to give that update as of October sixth be too much of an imposition? Ted, have you walked away?
You might have.
Hello, this is, this is Ted. I understand I was posed a question.
Yes. After the tax period ends on September 30th, would you be able to provide us with an update at the October 6th meeting about just what percentage of taxes are left outstanding, not paid on time, and kind of an estimate of the balance for Story County?
Yeah, currently we are, just so you guys know, we still have about 19 million to come in, which is just over 20% of our September taxes. That does not include all the mail and Dropbox stuff we've received today, so that hasn't been entered into the system. But we figure in the next few days, we'll probably get at least 10 million of that, hopefully more. But we've got, we've got, we just checked this morning, we've got 50, we've got 62 of our 81 million collected for September.
You could give us a report next Tuesday, which would be as of 30th?
Yeah, what, do you guys just want to know the total percentage outstanding in the dollar amount, or what do you want on a report?
Yeah, that's usually what, what I think you've given us in the past, you know, it just gives us an idea about where we are on revenue, kind of just as to it forward.
And I set up to, September 30th, but if you have receipts going into October, you know, as much as you can do. That would be great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
No, I was, I was on a phone call, so I'm sorry. Was that all you guys needed?
Yep, thank you. And were there, were there any other upcoming agenda items? If not, I'm going to open public forum number two and I'm going, I noticed that Nick Sorenson is on the phone. So Dan, you're still here, would you like to introduce?
It'd be my pleasure, Supervisor Merkin. I'm honored to introduce you this morning, Nick Sorenson, who is going to be the new Director of Community and Economic Development Outreach, supporting our contract with you and the Board Supervisors and Story County Communities. We've had a, we've had a nice list of folks that have been through that position, starting with Drew Camp and Brenda Dryer and Dustin Ingram. And then when Dustin moved on to Chicago here a few months ago, Brenda went back and did a great job on an interim basis. And no different than, than those folks, Nick is going to do an outstanding job for us. He comes highly regarded from the Jefferson community where he had a wide variety of responsibilities there. But I think one of the things I'm most excited about is that he was, he was really integral in building rehabilitation, historic preservation, and some of those things that are so important to all of our communities of really any size. And so I called Debbie Durham, the State Director of Economic Development, a few months ago and I said, when I say Nick Sorenson, what would you say? And she said, hire him. And so it was a very easy decision. You're going to find Nick to be very delightful. I'm going to turn it over to him now as he will be leading that piece of our business on behalf of the Ames Economic Development Commission. Nick, please.
Welcome, Nick.
Thank you. To say I'm excited really doesn't put it into very good words. I lived in Ames for a short time, but I've been in Jefferson for pretty much the last 13 years, had a variety of jobs there, from worked my way from police officer to police sergeant to building inspector to building inspector in a rural community turns into, okay, what else can you tackle? And we started tackling downtown buildings. And that's how I developed a relationship with Debbie Durham, with IFA and Iowa Economic Development Authority. But just really excited to get to work. This team here is absolutely fantastic and look forward to working with you all as well.
Well, we look forward to working with you and to meeting you in person. So thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Nick?
No, just welcome.
Okay. Next we have liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements. Who would like to start?
Go ahead. Yeah, this week I don't have my floor, we didn't say, so I have CCMT on my calendar for tomorrow. Otherwise I'll just fully be in the office, responding to emails and whatever else may pop up along the week.
So I have CCMT, the jurisdictional meeting on Thursday night that we always have. There is finally another quarterly meeting of the transportation collaboration, which is, yeah, the transportation collaboration, and then that's next week. Yeah, sorry, I just realized that. And this week is Two Rivers, which is quarterly for the Policy Committee. And I don't sit officially on it anymore, it's not an appointed from the board anymore than other, several other people, because there's somebody from the Veterans Affairs. I know Brett has gone to that in past years. This used to be the Affordable Housing Coalition of Story County. And so I guess I've been attending it for a long time. But we do have official county representatives from community light, our community services. Kathy Johnson is our official representative on the Technical Committee and the Policy Committee. So this is just a bigger brainstorming type of collaboration. And I just, I got, see, I got notice that there's going to be a meeting on Thursday morning. That's it. Or yes, this kind of a third Tuesday kind of moves us into a slow period.
Okay. I had a meeting this morning with the Auditor's Office, a call with the Brendan Vogelfen State Auditor's Office. They're beginning work on the FY '20 audit. Report will probably be anticipated in March. Have also been, I didn't report, I think last week on Storycom meeting. We did finally get the approval on the last, the last permanent tower. I don't think that a lot's going to get done in terms of actual construction this fall. Probably next spring is when the construction will start to get all of the towers. Wallace Tower is already temporary on, it's going to be a permanent tower. But to get the other ones all up and running will be next year. So the Prairie Rivers of Iowa meeting, we had a meeting last Thursday at Franklin Park and Prairie Rivers is doing a lot of work right now on fundraising, an Oxbow project up at some county lands just south of and just north of the Wicks Properties, restoring some Oxbows there. That's going to be a really interesting project, a demonstration project on the value of Oxbows and water quality. I'm working still with people on the headwaters of the South Skunk, the WMA for that. Hopefully have a meeting in October, we're getting more entities interested in that. Radio grants, we still have some excess radios at the Sheriff's Office who are purchased with Storycom and we're working on getting some more of those out to the local jurisdictions to help them make sure they have a sufficient number of radios for their volunteers. And I think, my gosh, I think, I think that's about it right now. Have the two meetings that you folks mentioned, the CCMT tomorrow. And for people's reminder, that's just if there's any last minute things that we haven't thought of that we need to get put together before we open the admin building next Monday. And also then the jurisdictional executive meeting, and I think that's going to be it for meetings for me. I might try to zoom in on the, tonight on the Ames City Council meeting, they're talking about their policing report, so I'm kind of interested in that. So just a lot of projects going on right now. So that's all I have and there's nothing else then. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
They'll move second.
Ands.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Merkin, aye, we're adjourned.[1181.94]